Jessica, can you hear us? Thank you. Hello.
Hey guys.
Hi, how's it going? Our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're meeting this evening, Wednesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. I'm gonna take a role, Greg Zinser.
Here.
Of Burnell Bailey.
Here.
Ken Conley, Bill Cole.
Here.
Of Betsy Randall. So we have five members, two of our members is are alternates, but because we are missing Mamley and Hershey, both of you will be voting numbers this evening. Um, we will start with the public hearing regarding our ordinance for Tucker one forty-seven, the site plan review. And I'll open it up, is there anybody here that has comments?
Yeah, is that about in regards to the um?
A butters. Notifying the butters. Yes. Oh, great. Okay.
Only for um the ordinance, that's what we're here for.
Right, only for the ordinance for this, okay, but it, but the ordinance is saying that now we are requesting a butters be notified. So this isn't about any particular project.
Exactly.
This is only regarding that we have now added to our ordinance that it's a requirement. So is there anybody here that has anything to say specifically regarding the fact that we are now requiring or or hope to require that new projects submit notifications?
Pat Robinson, Brown Street, I think it's a very good idea. Glad you did it. And I, and I do wonder why the Conservation Commission got an abutment notice because does the town own land there?
Well, this isn't for anyone specific. Specific project, this is just that now the town is going to require.
That's totally different.
Okay.
Totally different.
Okay, I'll ask that question later, I'm just curious.
So does anybody have anything to say regarding the fact that we are now hoping to require that subdivision applicants but notify abutters? About?
It is about the ordinance.
Oh, about the ordinance.
Just want to clarify, the amendment to the ordinance requires you to also inform the Conservation Commission.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's those.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, oh, okay, but they already sent out the abutment.
Yes.
Okay, so if there is.
Tony Pelzetti on Six Whitetail Drive in Meadow Pond Development. My question would be, how you define a butters? Budding neighborhood, it consists of individual property owners and land owned in, you know, mutual would the entire association with the entire neighborhood be notified? Or just specifically the property owners whose property lines are directly adjacent to the new project?
Um, do you have a definition, one forty-nine? Joe, would you be able to answer that, right?
Well, I think, I think what they've done in the past is they notify the president of the association. Okay, it says abutting properties within two hundred and fifty feet. That was the requirement, if, you know, again, if they want to expand that for similar projects that are expanding other subdivisions. You're, you're on your final read on this? Or no? You're just doing a public hearing, so you can still amend it.
Yes, we can still amend it.
I mean, because that, yeah, I mean, obviously, everybody within two hundred and fifty feet gets notified. Anybody after that, but the association has somewhat standing if they have a land that abuts there, then the association would and then they, they more or less let it be the president would notify all the abutters, you know, all the members of the association at that time. I mean, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
You know, because of what's, what's going on, like I said, this was for, to make sure that before it wasn't until the public hearing that we notified abutters, okay? They wanted to notify them right up front as soon as the application was in. So now you guys got a heads up right from the get-go all the way through. So that's what the amendment was for the ordinance.
True. And, and let's just clarify too, that all of this is on the town website. So if you just kind of were checking in periodically, you would, you would know that, too. Just state your name and where you live.
Dennis Spencer, sixty-six Meadow Pond. So my question with the, the site plan review tonight that's scheduled.
Well, so we're not talking about that right now. We're only talking about our ordinance and the way it's written, which is that we are going to require at a sketch play, at the sketch plan that someone who's applying for subdivision has to notify abutters that are within two hundred and fifty feet of the property lot.
Excellent, thank you. Is he going to be approved or not approved at this meeting?
We're not talking about that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
On Pat?
Pat Robinson again, Brown Street. I think that two hundred and fifty feet is not very far away and especially in the case of Meadow Pond. This, the whole road is probably way more than two hundred feet from where this new third phase will be, so I think that something needs to be said about or within an already established subdivision that we, something, you know, worded somehow, so. You know. Yeah. You know, it, it does get complicated, but maybe more than two hundred and fifty feet though, maybe a thousand feet or something, a thousand, give or take, you know? Yep, be a little bit oopsie goosey about the distance.
Okay. Thank you, Pat.
Just Sam Canton, Meadow Pond Road, just one, I, I thought that if, my suggestion would be, if there's a homeowner, homeowners association fee where eighteen homes have to pay that fee, then obviously they have a, a skin in the game and they all should be notified.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? From the public?
And you did also say the president of the homeowners association was also part of that notification.
I, I don't believe so.
But, but, so let's talk about the notification process and, and you know how that works. So we're coming from a position of not having anything on the books right now that require any sort of notification to you. And so this is in response to other issues that have come up in the past, and so that's why we're advancing this particular language for review. So as Joe said, the code enforcement officer, anybody right now who's in the budding property owner within a certain distance will be notified. Typically speaking, you know, homeowners association have like a, a, a lawyer's firm that oversees that or that lawyer's firm in, in the particular instance may be notified. My hope, my guess would be by, by the notification to the, to the owner of that, in this case, in your case, homeowners association. Your homeowners association would then be notified somehow, some way. That person would be responsible for disseminating that particular information. So I hear everything that's going on here tonight, you're all here for the Samville Estates, which is the extension of Meadow Pond, but again, what Betsy's saying, we're not, we're not talking about that one right now. I hear what you're saying, yeah, and again, we understand the abutter issue and that's why we're trying to respond to it. We think it's a great idea and the board's been working on this for a while. So, you know, again, comments coming in are great. You know, if you're looking for us to expand, that's something we can think about, but, you know, right now, yeah.
Go ahead, Joe.
No, finish.
I'm, I'm done, Joe. Yeah.
It, and again, it is confusing because what they're trying to talk about, because that Samville, they asked him to notify everybody now because they were going to change the zone. That's why you got all these butters notices. Because that project's going to be coming in front of the planning board and he sent them out already. That's why you all got them, okay? But they were doing a amendment to the ordinance to state that that will have to be done because at first he said, the ordinance doesn't say that. True, but that's why we're doing the amendment to say it will be notified at sketch.
It's a fairly significant, so you should be aware of that.
So.
Yep.
Yep, I just want to finish the, the vote hearing, yep, go ahead, no.
No, Tony Pelzetti, Whitetail Drive, I was just gonna say, I absolutely appreciate that the board is gonna take the opportunity to make these notices further in, or earlier in the process. Because, you know, as much as I understand that all of these minutes and such are posted on the town website and I have over the years looked at not just the South Berwick, you know, agendas, but the North Berwick agendas because our properties are but the North Berwick line as well. But you, you're not going to catch every one. So to have you guys proactively notifying the abutters, the associations, that we can disseminate the information and do it early enough that maybe we can actually help to influence the plan before the plan, you know, is, is so inked on paper that nobody wants to change it. To have an opportunity early in the process is very beneficial for us and I would think for the overall process. Thank you.
And with that, there are no other comments, I'm going to end the public hearing. One second, I just want to know, um, can you please add under discussion items this site plan review ordinance for us to discuss our feedback? And so we will talk about that at our next meeting and go over the feedback from Amy's notes and then we'll make a plan, a better plan in the past. Okay, so our first order of business is a presentation hosted by the South Borough Conservation Commission. Mark Lawrence is here, South Berwick State Senator and Chairman of Energy Utilities and Technology Committee regarding community solar and how it could impact the town of South Berwick. So.
Thank you, and thank you, first of all, thank you for having me here. I wasn't prepared to do a presentation, I understood that you had questions you wanted to ask about community solar.
So while right now we're working on community solar ordinance, there's an oratorium on solar farms because we were getting so many in and there were a lot of things that we hadn't really thought of.
Yeah.
There were problems that were coming up and so we don't have any specific questions per se, but if there is anything any experiences that you've had thus far in how solar farms are being incorporated into other towns, problems that have come up, ways that it's maybe benefited, benefited the town, we would appreciate any of that information.
So I don't know what you mean by benefiting the town.
Just, um, what's the way to, yep.
I'm sorry, I thought the community solar was, and people buy into solar and then get credits, but for people who cannot put solar on their own house because they don't get no sun. And that's what my impression that you knew quite a bit about that.
So, community solar is, I mean, it's not really a defined term, it's just a generic term that people use to define things. Do you have something I could write on with here, I think I can explain a little bit better, if you have something? So there are, solar is obviously can be done on many different levels, there's grid scale solar, there's distributive generation. That's sometimes called community solar, there's rooftop solar, so solar, even before we made the change in the legislation, solar could be done anywhere in the state of Maine and you have to essentially get an agreement with the PUC on where you book in. Community solar is often used to refer to what's called distributive generation, which is where people put into the distribution system instead of the grid system, so they're only selling within a certain area. And it's different than rooftop solar. Rooftop solar is what we call behind the meter solar. So let's say you put solar on here, it would be behind your meter, meaning it's not out on the distribution system. So behind your meter, you use what you can and then whatever you, whatever you don't use, you get a credit pool. So that's what rooftop solar is. Distributive generation is, the best way to describe it is we have huge transmission lines bringing electricity in and out of Maine and all around this country. So a transmission line is a large line that packs electricity, very high concentration of electricity coming in and it moves it very, very efficiently, but it can't be used on a household or a, or a school level or a town hall level, it has to be unpacked, essentially. So along a transmission line, then they'll have smaller transmission lines that take it to various parts in the state, around the state. And then eventually it hits what they call a distribution center, gets broken down on that time and it's what, a distribution center. And we have them around here, they're the ones you see them, CMP has them, they have the fences all around them and they just essentially break down the electricity into a small enough unit that it now can be consumed by the consumers. And sometimes they have even additional distribution centers that break them down into uh, smaller amounts so it can get into the house, so it can be several different step downs. And these systems are connected outside of the state of Maine, it's connected all the way to California, all the way to Oregon, you know, it's all over, this system is connected. So what grid scale solar out, those, there are huge multi-megawatt farms that could be created, you know, there's some up in the Augusta area and they contract, contact directly into the grid system. So their electricity flows into the grid system and can be, go anywhere, essentially when it goes in. Distributive generation, Maine had a certain amount of rooftop solar, but for a long time in the state of Maine, the laws were very prohibitive and didn't provide incentives for people to do that. So what the legislature did about four years ago was increase the incentives for people not only to do rooftop solar, rooftop solar is about six point six megawatts. If I could, just point six megawatts, they're small projects. They're very, very tiny. And when the legislature adopted something called net energy billing, which is a way to bill for solar and it's a way to promote smaller projects in solar. The legislature adopted net energy billing and that allowed for larger solar farms to qualify for that. So it's up to five megawatts, was the limit, was increased to five megawatts, but they're attached to the distribution system, not the grid. So the electricity doesn't flow this way, it only flows one way. So if you attach a distributive generation system, that electricity has to be used within that distribution system. Okay, it's all sold, so that's what they refer to as community solar. They have to have enough subscribers within the system who are gonna sign up for the electricity to be distributive within the system. And the PUC and the transmission and distribution company like CMP or Versen, they regulate that because they don't want too many to attach in any one area because that would overburden the system. But it's essentially provides a different type as we move towards more renewable energy, a different type of source of renewable energy. And the advantage to it is, these companies, when they attach and these, when this was adopted, we were surprised in the state of Maine by the volume of people who applied. Just, there was so much, because Maine had had essentially forbidden it for eight years and then when it was opened up, all this money flowed in from Ireland, from Europe, from everywhere to do these five megawatt projects all around Maine and there is something like, I remember the last time I talked to the PUC, chairman of the PUC, there was a hundred, twelve hundred megawatts applied for to, and distribution, not on grid scale solar, but on distribution systems. And so they're trying to figure out now, how do we get them, how do we get the most favorable projects to attach? And how do we get them, but the advantage with distributive generation is when they attach to a distribution system, they have to pay a price that allows CMP or Versen or whoever owns the distribution system to enhance the system and then all ratepayers get an advantage from that because the, the distribution system is, is upgraded in many ways. So that's what's going on, you see one, if you've ever driven up two thirty-six, you know, when you go by past the, past the water district a little bit further, the road that goes over to the back way into, what's that?
Big Dillon.
Yeah, if you look up in there, there's a small solar facility, that's a DG solar system, that's small enough to be. The grid scale are just huge, they pick up huge, huge amounts of area.
So, two things that I think of when I wondered about benefiting residents of South Berwick. One, do the presence of these lower our electric costs? One, do the presence of these lower our electric costs?
So, and that's a huge debate, you know, there's there's constant debate and we're constantly debating this. From my perspective, unless we move to renewables, we're constantly going to have escalating rates. And you see it now, uh, the rates went up tremendously and it's because we use natural gas. We get a lot of our electricity produced by natural gas. What's been going on with natural gas and the limitations of getting natural gas. And now the war in Ukraine, that has tremendously um increased the price of natural gas. So whenever you produce electricity by burning a fossil fuel. You will always have escalating costs in the future because they're not making any new fossil fuel. You're you're burning a limited supply and it's going to go up and up in price. The advantage of getting more solar, more wind, more hydro, more thermal in your in your energy system is. You don't pay for the wind. You don't pay for the the solar. You don't pay for the water. It's something, once you've built the physical cost of the facility, you're not going to see it, you know, increasing costs. If you build a oil-fired electricity plant. You have that fixed cost of building it, but you don't know what's going to happen to the price of oil in the future. And that's going to drive up electricity. So that's a long way to answer. Yes, there are benefits, but people are debating it. And in order to stimulate the net energy billing, they were given essentially a fixed price called the standard rate offer. And um, some people have concerns that that's going to bring in too many people into the system who are getting the standard rate offer. And that may rise raise the prices. We haven't seen any of that yet. But just give you some perspective, I mean, you could do all the rooftop solar in the city of Maine and you're only going to hit maybe one or two percent of our electricity. That's how much electricity we consume. So this is only one part, one small part of a, you know, renewable energy plant.
So my other question, so for example, I live in Aggie. I hate it when my power goes out. And it'll go out all the time and it'll be out for like a couple hours and some transformer will blue, whatever. If there was one of these, would that improve the distribution center and limit the number of times these transformers blow?
Potential, potentially. It's not necessarily transformable. It could be any number of things. It could be. Um, you know, a tree hitting the wire or something like that or where it comes from. When a solar, small distributive generation solar system comes in. It gives a constants, a more constant supply within the distribution system. And if you were to put solar on your rooftop, that would be what we call behind the meter. You have an electricity meter and your electricity is produced within your house. You use it for your house and then whatever you don't use, you get a credit for because that goes back into the distribution system. Um, you get a credit for. So if you had rooftop solar, chances are you wouldn't be affected when a transformer went. Unless it was a cloudy day and you were pulling off off the distribution system.
Okay, if I could word this right. Okay, Elliot, I saw her in the Sentinel, Elliot. Elliot now has um community solar. This is what the Sentinel said, for residents of Elliot. So. And they are the only ones that can sign up for this particular community solar. I don't know if that is a solar. Um, array in Elliot or if it's coming from elsewhere, but knowing. But it's only Elliot. And so so they're getting the benefit of store from someplace. And we have been getting notices from CMP, Nexamp. So so those. Is that where like someone can sign up for that and your power comes through some solar array?
So if you plug something into this electric socket, there's no guarantee where that electron comes from.
Right.
It could come from New York. It could come from New York Power Plant in Connecticut, could from come from anywhere. So in order for them to get approved for a project, they have to have a certain number of consumers. Within a certain area signed up with them. If they're going to be producing five megawatts, they have to have five megawatts of consumers.
People like Nexamp.
Nexamp, yeah, that's part of their application to the PUC and to CMP to get approved. They have to show that they have consumers signed up with them. And they actually CMP actually builds the consumers directly for that electricity. It's not produced by through the standard rate offer, which most people, most people use. So that's what they're trying to do. And to an extent, it's a sales pitch, you know, people in Elliot, you can get this solar power. You know, renewable power because they're trying to sign up five megawatts. So because they have a period of time. To prove to the PUC and prove to CMP that they've got the customers or otherwise their proposal is going to be rejected.
So so and Elliot, you live in Elliot.
Oh, yeah, they stopped by my door and everything.
So so who's they?
It could be a company called Nexamp. It could be, there are literally, I don't know how many companies. And you can get on the state of Maine website. Um, and if you look up community solar um on the state website. It'll give you a list of the approved companies. So you can check and see if this is a legitimate company.
Okay, so 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 but there was one particular company that went to the Elliot residence and and said, you know, blah, blah, blah. So so could that company or some other company do this specifically in South Berwick?
Yeah, if that if that was part of their distribution system that they were attaching to and they had to get enough customers. Within that computer distribution system to prove that they uh met the requirements of the PUC, then that's what they would do.
I am going to stop up there and I'm going to allow any board members, if you have any question, are there any questions?
In my understanding, it's totally within your purview as a planning board to zone them. All the legislature did was increase their profitability. So now more are moving in. And that's why you're feeling so much pressure.
And that's part of the concern, you know, what we're here talking about is what is the impact on these facilities, you know? Five megawatts is, you know, twenty acres or so. That's a big clear, so to speak. Not talking about the benefits and pros and the cons. The issue is from the zoning perspective, what is the appropriate place to cite these things? That's what we're discussing, you know, and what restrictions do we want to set on them in terms of setbacks and property lines or proper strips? Those are the conversations that are occurring here. So that's what we've been trying to get at here in the long in terms of the size of these things. Not necessarily from my perspective, not that of the boards, you know, understanding how this works, you know, we're going to get solicited all the time. About people trying to sell something particularly on the, you know, the 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 solar stuff. So I don't, we can't really address that. It's really, we're focused on the size and do we want to put limitations on them, you know? So if we say fifteen acre minimum or three hundred foot setback or something like that, there's implications there. And essentially, you know, you zone them out or you zone them in uh in anything in between. So that's that's where we are.
And and we have some policy concerns growing in the legislature about use of agricultural land, loss of agricultural land, things like that that are. You know, coming to fruition. This, in many ways, this has unfolded so quick and there was such a volume of money out there. That wanted to be invested in these projects that it just exploded to a degree nobody expected.
You touched on it just briefly, Senator, on the the costs. Can you define some of that, uh, for instance? Bears the cost of all the installation, who bears the cost of upkeep, who bears the cost of discounts and all that?
So whenever something like this is done, obviously the rate payers pay for it. And if you give a discount to somebody. Um, it's spread among rate parents and that's.
Rate payers being?
The entire state, you know, entire state. Right, exactly. So whenever we do a project, something like that. There's a potential for impact on rate payers. So when we get legislations proposing something like this. That's one of the questions we ask and we have the PUC come talk to us. They hire experts. We try to determine what's the potential impact. On on rate pairs. There's a debate about how much it's going to impact net energy billing is going to impact rate pairs. One, some people say one to two percent or something like that. There's a long-term advantage, in my opinion, of doing this because we get the rate payers away from being relied on. Electricity that's relied on fossil fuel because that's only going to increase in the future. So in a way, we pay some costs upfront in order to buffer people from costs in the future. And that's the bait. It's a polit- political debate. It's a great policy debate. We do it all the time in there. And whenever we do a project, for example, we, one of my pieces of legislation was to approve, approve, um, do the uh third stage of the floating offshore wind project. We gave them a rate subsidy because we know if they get to the fourth stage. We're going to have more electricity, like something like thirty percent of the electricity New England needs produced from these floating offshore wind farms. But in order to get there, in order to get financial incentive for somebody to do that test. That next stage, we had to guarantee them a rate so they could guarantee that they could finance the project. So that impacts rate payers, you know, whenever you do that. So we try to choose very carefully how we're doing this and how we get there.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. We'll move on to, so now we have our review of the wind work charge from the solar farm. However, we do have um. Old business and a pre-application review that I think probably we should do first. Um, if nobody objects, um, we can start with um David Springer. Let's see here.
Hi, Walter Pelkey from BH2M.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, Walter Pelkey, BH2M and I represent Dave Springer.
And can you um let us know what you're hoping to get out of tonight's um discussion?
Yeah, uh, all we want to do tonight is is introduce uh the project. And get any concerns, uh, and input from the board and answer any questions you folks might have. Uh, as part of the packet that we submitted. Uh, it's a property Dave Springer owns, an eight acre parcel in the industrial zone. Uh, shown on the city's tax maps as uh tax map one, lot is twenty-five A. The project will consist of three buildings. Uh, one building will be a retail store uh with a storage area associated with it. There'll be a second building that'll be a nursery and hemp building. And the third building will be a uh grow and cultivation building. And only twenty-five hundred square feet of that uh will be um cultivation. Uh, the three buildings will be served by individual wells, individual septic. Uh, we will run underground electric from Lord's Lane Extension, which Dave uh has developed over the last two, three years. I guess with that, I'm I'm happy to have any input uh the board might give me or answer any questions you might have.
Um, all of board members, are there any questions that you guys have?
Yeah, Walter, uh, Greg Zins are here. How are you? Thank you for attending. Um, I just have a, you know, I do have a series of questions uh regarding what it is that's being proposed. So. I guess I'm looking for some further information. As you know, we do have a growth and cultivation ordinance, which I'm sure you're aware of. Uh, as it pertains to medical marijuana. Hemp is an interesting little uh deviation because we don't really necessarily address them. We also have an ordinance for medical storefronts. So I'm really interested to understand when you say. You're having a storefront plus storage uh on one hand, because those are only allowed in the B one overlay if it's for medical marijuana. And the the growth facility that you have listed at the twenty-five hundred square feet. I'd like some further information on that in terms of, you know, the 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 cultivators that would be operating in there, the the caregivers. Uh, because. What I want to be careful of other board members is inadvertently opting us into something that we shouldn't be opting into. Which is really a discussion that would happen at the town council level. Twenty-five hundred square feet, you know. What we need to understand is what's the intent of that building? Is it, you know, five separate five hundred square foot blocks? Which was the intent of the ordinance because we don't have a uh our our ordinance, in my view. Doesn't opt us into like a manufacturing level type of uh approach here. So I'd I'd like some further information on that. And if you have it tonight, great, but that's good. There's a couple of my questions. And then on that, uh, the hemp and the document that I looked at, but it said. I have slash nursery, uh, so I'm not really sure, is it hemp and a nursery or nursery for raising hemp? Uh, or is it a nursery for, uh, you know, medical grade marijuana? So I'd like to have some further information on on all of that. Uh, what specifically is going to be happening? Because as you know and as you're aware, hemp and marijuana, well, technically the same thing. It's a whole different level of the of the testing and and what each product can be used for. So, uh, I'd like to know really specifically when it comes to the hemp facility. How and what the intent would be for ensuring that uh it's actually hemp and not marijuana.
Well, the uh the storefront, that I will have to do a review and I can check back with you folks on that as we move forward. It's my understanding today that the cultivation area that that. The cultivation area that would be associated with this store would use all twenty-five hundred square feet of the allowable cultivation area. Everything beyond that in that building and that building is about six thousand square feet would just result. In in more of a storage area. But again, the cultivation area would stay twenty-five hundred square feet. The, and again, wi- without. And and I'm not the guy to make a legal opinion, but the nursery and the hemp area. Is our understanding and and I don't know and it, uh, how many of you folks have heard the term clone? And it it's basically uh like going down to your local hardware store, uh, buying a tomato plant. That at this point doesn't have a tomato on it. It's a marijuana clone is. The way we understand it, technically not marijuana until it re- till it has THC on it. And hemp, of course, is a completely different animal. That's the intent as we've presented it here.
Sorry to interrupt, folks.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, Michael, uh, it's not a public hearing, so.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, I'm actually on the call with uh with Walter for this and I can uh go into a little bit more detail about this if you'd like.
Okay, so who who are you exactly and how are you related to the project?
My name is Michael Skolnick and uh work on behalf of David Springer. I work for Archipelago Law in Portland.
Okay, so you're a lawyer.
I'd like to hear from Walter. I'd like Walter to finish his statement. And then we individually, we can hear from Michael after. I don't want to.
But no, it, I'm all set. This would be a good point for for Michael to, what I can't cover, he he can for us.
Yeah, thank you for having me, by the way. Um, so first off, I just want to speak a little bit to the question about the marijuana versus the hemp. So the nursery building itself, it it gets a little confusing in the ordinance where, yes, the recent amendment to the ordinance. Does adopt a medical marijuana cultivation facility. However, it doesn't really make that dis- uh distinguish between. Marijuana and hemp very well. So there is a limit for marijuana itself. However, these hemp buildings are a little bit different. So the ordinance, under their definition of marijuana. Actually goes to the state definition. And uh through some of Walter's initial conversations with Joe Russell, your seats. And, uh, through some of Walter's initial conversations with Joe Rusell, your C- Code Enforcement Officer, where something's not defined, like hemp isn't under your ordinance, uh, we try and refer to the state definition of that. So the state's definition marijuana actually specifically excludes hemp from their definition. And the Marijuana Legalization Act is where marijuana is defined, and that excludes hemp. And we've actually looked to Title VII, which is the agricultural use under the state statutes. So that's where we would go, and the state statute actually adopts the federal definition of hemp as well, which, as you know, like you were saying before, hemp's actually a little bit different. It doesn't have the psycho, the psychoactive effect as marijuana would, and, um, it's actually allowed at the federal level and at the state level under agricultural uses. So this is, in all fifty states, hemp has been legalized, and it's actually controlled at the federal level by the USDA, which is a United States Department of Agriculture, and at the state level, it's actually controlled by the Department of Agri- Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, where that's where all licensing authority would actually come from. However, marijuana and anything that would fall under your ordinance as the marijuana cultivis- cultivation would actually come from the Office of Cannabis Policy. So that's where that distinction really is, where one of these buildings would be for medical marijuana, and the other one, the nursery and hemp facility, would actually be only growing hemp. And it would be limited to that under any site plan review. That's something that would be reviewed, and we'd have to only allow, only allow hemp to be grown in that building. So it would actually fall under your definition of nurseries instead of marijuana. I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions you might have.
Oh, the, the hemp slash nursery isn't going to be a feeder program for the called the, the, the twenty-five hundred square foot cultivation facility. I heard a little bit of a difference from Walter there, and I'm trying to understand it a little better.
At this point, I am, I might not be the best person to answer actually Dave Springer's plans for that. However, that is not the intention, is my understanding.
Oh, then what you could do, walk away tonight, is we're looking, I'm looking for further information on that. I think that's going to be critical, and also the, you know, this twenty-five hundred square foot thing, the intent was, uh, you know, we'll have to review it further, was the, the twenty-five hundred square feet was for the, you know, three or more caregivers. And so the intent was that it would be one caregiver with five hundred square feet, which has been the traditional approach with the cultivation facility. Everybody gets their five hundred square feet. So we really need to look into whether or not we could inadvertently opt the town into some level of a cultivation tiered license system, uh, which we are not opted into, so.
So I can actually, I can speak a little bit further to the size issue as well, if you'd like. Just based on the ordinance, I mean, under these medical marijuana facilities, there are, it says there needs to be three caregivers in there, so it would be split up somewhat. However, um, just going back to the ordinance, it actually limits twenty-five hundred square feet, as you said, for the whole facility. And it actually says that for just cultivation area, so there's not really a definition on, in your ordinance of cultivation area. So at the same time, we look towards the state or, uh, state definition again. And in that tiered system that you were talking about at the state level, they for, they go by can't mature canopy. And their definition of mature canopy actually has the total area of mature plant canopy. So given, you can absolutely limit the mature plant, everything on the top level, pretty much everything that's mature and actually budding to that twenty-five hundred square feet, and we a hundred percent rem- will remain under that. However, all these immature plants to start up different plants wouldn't be considered under the state definition, and we think wouldn't be considered under cultivation area under the ordinance. So that's why it would be allowed to be a bigger building, and understandably so. A lot of these buildings have offices, have bathrooms and have area to store soil and things like that. So the cultivation area would actually be where the mature canopy sits under the state definition, and we believe into the, uh, South or, South Berwick's definition as well.
Um, can you just remind me, I'm having a hard time finding right now, how the sizes of the buildings and what they're used for?
So, um, Walter can speak a little bit more towards it. However, uh, each building, sorry, the retail store would be four thousand square feet, and the other two buildings, one as a hemp nursery and the other as a medical marijuana facility would be six thousand square feet. And that's the footprint, not what the, the actual grow area within the building.
So we're going to need some further information on how you think you're able to have a a storefront out there unless you're just strictly selling at this point for purposes of the conversation without binding us to anything. Uh, you know, if you're just going to be selling hemp products, which I I don't think that's the case, which would just be a CBD-based product. Uh, again, the ordinance explicitly exclude, you just simply can't have a storefront down there. That's the B1 overlay.
I would, I would say that the, one of the, uh, more pressing issues is that this is probably not going to be just. Okay, this is, uh, not just going to be one application. I think you, I believe you'll have to submit a separate application for, um, a retail store. I, I don't think that you can have this all under one application. Because we have ordinances for different, for, for storefronts separately. So that would have to be a, a separate application. Um, the other thing I would say is, is we do have in our ordinance, it says three or more registered caregivers. So you would have to have some type of proof of how the, how the building is separated among three or more registered caregivers. Um, the other thing, and if you just bear with me for a second while I look here. So no monetary, uh, number six under G, wait, no, number six, sorry. Says no monetary transactions or transfer of products between medical marijuana growing facility operator and a medical marijuana cardholder slash patient may take place on the premises. I think you're going to have a really hard time getting around that.
In, within the medical marijuana facility itself, there, there wouldn't be any transactions happening of any kind.
But it's on the property. So it says on the premises. So again, I mean, you would have to, I, I think, I think this is something that you'd have to consider, you know, is this something you have to subdivide in order to have the different property lines, but I, I, those are concerns of mine that we would definitely have our lawyer look at.
Absolutely. Um, so what you're saying, your concern would be that on the premises would mean the property itself and not the facility that would be getting permitted.
Correct. Um, unless perhaps you subdivided the property, but then you'd have
But then there's limitations.
But then there's limitations on how many can be, you have to be a certain number of feet away from another facility.
It would be, so our understanding and, and absolutely will take all this thing into consideration. I'm just more trying to clarify what we're, we should look into. So the only one on the, uh, only one facility, we were under the impression that it would mean medical marijuana facilities, because it's in that ordinance, only one of those establishments can be on the property.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
So I think, I believe, and correct me if I was wrong, what you were getting at is the fact that there can only be one medical marijuana cultivation facility on the property, where this is there, the, in this project, there is actually only one cultivation facility on the property. However, there may be a retail store or an agricultural nursery as well, so.
Yeah, so, uh, this does include cultivating, harvesting, drying, packaging and transportation. I, I mean, you, I don't, you can't have a retail store under the same application as a growth store. That is not gonna, that's not going to be able to work. Um, I would, um, you know, really read over our ordinance, um, for both retail stores and our cultivation growing facility. Um, again, retail stores, I believe it's only an overlay district that we.
That's my understanding. I think it used to be B1 overlay, and then there was some question about I1I2, the I1I2 was taken out specifically to prevent exactly this being proposed, uh, of having, you know, an area kind of overrun with this cultivation, manufacturing and a retail store. Uh, I remember that was a specific conversation, which led to get it out of the I1I2, and which led to the B1 overlay for the the storefronts.
So I, I would say that, um, in all, and I'll let other members have time to comment, but, um, I would just be very aware that, uh, you'll need two applications um, for two separate things. They both, both have to comply, and this is something that um, is complicated enough that we will certainly have our lawyer involved to make sure that everything is done, um, to the T. So I guess be prepared, be prepared for lots of questions and an extremely thorough, um, application process. Are there any board members?
Yeah, I think, you know, spend some time looking at the cultivation ordinance and the retail store ordinance, because there's a whole host of other items out there. You know, you distance the schools and property lines and, you know, uh, cultivation facilities. And marijuana cultivation facilities, you know, we could get into a definitional battle between uh, what is, you know, hemp, which obviously is tempted through the agricultural use uh, out there to say, well, we get that, uh, but if it's still kind of a cultivation facility, you can't be near uh, another cultivation facility, it's a five hundred foot setback. So, uh, there's, there's a lot of other things that are going to have to be considered here for this as well.
Uh, Walter, are there any comments that you have that you'd like to mention before we close up this part of our meeting?
No, I, I think it does it for us, and, and unless Michael has anything else, but we appreciate your input and, and we'll take a look at these items and, and see where we go from there.
Great, well, thank you so much for coming.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you for your time.
So now we'll move on to old business MSP number twenty-two zero zero three. Um, new material regarding Sanville Estates, Meadow Pond Road. Um, and I'm sorry, can you remind me?
Liam Colan.
So was that?
Liam.
Liam, okay. Liam's going to be presenting. Is there anybody else from, um, your project that'll be speaking this evening?
Yeah, uh, Sandy Gay will be joining us via Zoom.
Okay. And I see her on there. Great.
Hey, Betsy, can I just raise, uh, one little issue, this placed my agenda in my pile of stuff. People that want to speak need to let us know, and so I know there's probably people here that are going to want to speak to this project. And so we want to give them an opportunity, whether you could hear from them, whether or not we do anything with that's another question, but I don't want to skip over that. If they're here to at least state something to us about that. You don't have to make it part of this, but we should give them an opportunity to at least state their position to us.
Yeah, so we typically at the beginning of a meeting ask if there's anybody here that has anything to say regarding, um, something that is not on the agenda, and I did forget that. Is there anybody here that has anything to say? Figured not. Um, but regarding this, I'm going to allow Liam to present first. Um, I think that just out of respect, we're going to give, we'll give the applicant their time to, uh, present and just make sure, making sure that we're being very thoughtful and that listening, and sort of asking questions if there are any issues.
Thank you. Um, so my name is Liam Colin from Matar Engineering. Um, I'm here representing Mick Land Development today, and, uh, I'm joined by Sandra Gay. And, uh, I'm here looking for, um, schedule approval for Sanville Estates, which is a proposed thirty-seven lot subdivision located in the R3 Transitional Residential District. It's located right off Meadow Pond Road and Industry Drive. I'm proposing a cluster subdivision, and I've also prepared a conventional subdivision to go along with it. And as part of that, I'd like to formally request a waiver for the South Burke subdivision ordinance, Article seven, one twenty-one dash forty-four, section H, requirement that the cul-de-sac, um, shall not exceed six hundred feet in length. Purpose of that is, um, to access half of the property. Uh, it's essentially impossible to, um, have a road that does not exceed six hundred feet in length, uh, without drastically impacting wetlands. And simultaneously with that, we are trying to preserve that section of land. And with our cluster subdivision, that portion that the proposed extended cul-de-sac will reach or is proposed to reach, um, that will all be preserved in the cluster subdivision. The only reason for the, the requested waiver is to, uh, have the correct amount of lots that, um, the density calculation allows and provide access through that conventional subdivision. But that, um, we'll go back to you.
Okay, so you have presented before, but, um, do you just want to show us where, um, where the roads in and out of this subdivision are?
Yep, so this is Industry Drive right here, um, and it leads right in through here. Uh, and then Meadow Pond Road is right here, and that's our access right there.
So there's an access out Industry Drive, but that's technically Berwick.
Yes, out in, yeah.
Yeah, and then out Meadow Pond is South Burke.
Correct.
Um, and the water district, what exactly is that in the center? Can you remind me? It's not a building.
No, it's not a building. Um, it's just a, a covenant area that the wat- the water district um, like owns and prevents that, that square section is owned by the South Burke Water District. And out the exterior of it is, um, a covenant area that, uh, we're not allowed to develop on in order to preserve the cleanliness of water that, um, exists underneath and may, uh, like flow to the water district's property.
Okay. Um, I know one question I have, and someone is just clarification. Um, I didn't read the stuff that the environmental, was it, I have no idea. I have no idea. So there were some things that were, some animals that were found around that pond, right?
Which pond?
At the top, yep. Is that the pond that?
That's off.
There, I think there's like a, there was a turtle, there's a place where there are a bunch of salanders.
Um, I believe that's off the property, and they determined that, um, there were no, let me just grab it really quick, so anything incorrect?
No, it did, it did say that it was a man-made pond, or a man-made, a man-made. I don't know.
Oh, yes.
Right, that, and so it didn't technically count.
So man, that's us, yes, that's, that's right. That's a, a designed pond. That pond didn't exist before there was development. So when the subdivision was created, um, on the north side in Berwick, that, uh, can't see it on this plan, but there is, um, like the industry, uh, I forget the name of it, subdivision to the north of it. Did, like, they dug out that pond or that area so that all stormwater drained to it. And it was like specifically engineered to treat that stormwater and let go and let it, so.
And where is that on the?
It's right here.
Oh, oh, so that is.
So that's not, yeah, and that's not on our property.
Oh, that's not on your property?
No.
But isn't there a, isn't there a, a house? It's a gray on the, like, on the water there?
There. There.
Um. Just the left.
Yeah, that's a, it's actually an eat, there's a drainage easement to it. So it's, it's on the property, but they have the right to drain stormwater to it. So at one point in time, I think the same person owned all of this land, and they, that pond was designed to drain to it. Or the, the land on the subdivision north in Berwick was designed to drain to it.
Okay.
And then this land was sold to, um, is either the prior, prior owner or the current, um, people that we're working with. For the subdivision to be approved. And with that came a drainage easement to that wet pond right there. And so all of those properties, you know, or most of them drain to that wet pond. But we do not have the ability to have our stormwater be treated there.
Okay. So you're not gonna be draining your stormwater?
No, we have separate stormwater facilities designed for that, so.
Okay. Um, and then I had one more question to start us off with, too. I did notice that, um, is it two metal ponds, two that was approved as a cluster? And, um, how many lots are in that one?
Nineteen.
Thank you, David.
Eighteen.
Oh, eighteen. Eighteen in phase two and over, what's the acreage? A phase two?
I'm not sure.
Um. Okay. So that's something that we need to. Okay. Um, and then phase one, you know, how many lots are these one?
Uh, I'm sorry, it's from Way Tail Drive. I, I misspoke. It's eighteen in both phase one and two.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
And two. Okay. That makes more sense. Um, and so how, how many in? This phase or, or the Sanville Estates, I apologize.
Sanville Estates? Well, it's a much larger piece of property, so thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. And the acreage, do you know?
The acreage is. Which investment podium.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Um. There's.
I saw something, I remember.
Yeah, yes, it's very large.
A hundred and sixty-eight.
A hundred and sixty-eight acres for Sanville Estates and, what? What's in here? Oh, it is. Yeah, sorry. Uh, so, and then phase one and two, we don't know the acreage, but is that something you can guess?
I can, yeah, absolutely.
I just, yeah, I would wanna know what, I just wanna know, but that. What that acreage is. Um, I have other things, but I'll open it up to the board. I don't, for now.
I do have a number. I didn't know if he was gonna. Get more on his presentation, whether to get it at appropriate time or.
Um.
Cause I do have some questions and stuff, but I can get them later.
You, you can have your questions. I'm ready.
Yep, go ahead.
You wanna know the, 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 what is the water history block there?
Yeah.
Again, to, there is a potential town well. Um, and the preservation of that is, um, I mentioned just a little bit, are there, we have, uh, hydrology studies done and stuff that, uh, by this, they might impact that or anything.
Um.
Not, uh.
But. It may be. That was the intention of the covenant area. I believe there were studies done that, like, designed that, that area.
Those previous input thirty-seven subject systems surrounding.
Yeah. Yeah, but that, that accounts for any development that exists around the area. So the. I mean, if.
They, they cover your point of. The timeline.
So.
If it exists, could we pull it and see if they consider?
Yeah. I mean, if, if they had designed it for there being no wastewater systems around it, there wouldn't be any covenant area. Like, soon as I'm, like, if they hadn't. They had not accounted for what was going to be around it in the first place, there wouldn't be a covenant, covenant area anyway.
It's high volume.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're gonna need a hydraulic study because you get into these issues they call mounting. Yeah, and the mounting is in reference to flow of water going in. Yeah, well, you know, we can design a system based on, you know, like the number of gallons per day, per person, per household. Can the land surrounding in a dense area in particular take that volume of water on paper? You know, you can do any calculation, but when it comes down to the actual. Hydrogeology test, the word, if there's studies that they have to do to see the absorption, the absorption rates of the water, which is very important. So you're saying that will be done? I'm not, I don't know if it's gonna be done. I'm saying that is something to consider.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, because you're, you could potentially be adding a lot of volume out there. And it's a mounting analysis thing. Pretty straightforward. And also some of the, the things we talked about there, the. Again, in relation to the water district, there are Sanjits out there. Was the, was the water district, the storm clearing set aside before that, uh, permits for the pits, were they, uh? What is the status of those? How, how they go? And also, and there's a stream crossing out there, was that permitted at the time? If we could find that out.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I don't know the, the stats of the centred permits, but. Um.
It might help us to, um, on these charts of, uh.
Yeah.
It's, we can find out where the pits were in relation to some of this stuff.
Yeah, and that, the, uh, string crossing you're talking about, that actually, as part of, um, our discussions with the EP, when we went through this about a year ago. Um, they do require us to upgrade those, uh, that culvert that's currently there. So that's already going to be, like, revisited with the DP. Thanks, yeah.
Any questions? Okay. Right?
Um. So I go. Looking at some of the documentation that was provided for us by David. You know, a couple of the things I think. I'm, I'm not comfortable tonight, frankly, approving a sketch plan. I think there's really too much out there at this point. I think there's really some basic questions that need to be answered first before we even really go forward, and that's what we talked about at the last meeting, conventional versus the cluster. And it was clear, you know, whether or not we go with a cluster, maybe we will, we know, but it does require, the ordinance requires. That we review as a traditional subdivision first, which could really change and alter this. In the sense of whether or not we want to grant that extension also that David outlined here, you know, the demo. So there's really a couple of key issues. That I think we need to work through, but I, you know, I really wanna, I don't know how, but I know we can. Somehow we need to have a meeting in Berwick because we have that Blackmore Road issue. Then we're also dealing with another larger subdivision. And I think we need to be sensitive, frankly, to the surrounding town. And not be dumping so much stuff out in their town, you know, the, you know, oh, it's just a road in Berwick. Well, okay. But there's gonna be a lot of traffic going down there, and a lot of traffic exiting out onto the four. And so, you know. You know, I. I just want them to be aware, and is there a process they're gonna have to go through? Have you made application to them? I mean, it sounds like an existing road. I'm not sure of their land use requirements or site plan reviews or any of that issue in Berwick. But it just seems to me, I know we said we would notify them, but. I would like to hear what they have to say, you know, and that may help me determine, frankly, as an individual board member. You know, do we wanna grant these extensions or waivers or traditional versus cluster? Not saying, you know, I just, it's a big, big issue here. Uh, we're doing a Black Fort Road, and we're gonna be doing it here, so. I think there's a couple. I'd like to have that meeting first, get some feedback.
That reminds me of something. So same owner, right, Meadow Pond Estates, Sanville Estates. Joe, what was the thing that happened, something about? It was, there was a understanding that they were going to improve the row, industry road or industrial road or whatever. There's supposed to be something where they were to improve it, and it just never happened.
It was, yeah, there was something that was in the way back. When Industry Drive hit to Berwick. We didn't finish some of the stuff that they thought, that was a problem.
But I remember Bill bringing it up because we were concerned, he was concerned that. You know. Things wouldn't get followed through.
Yeah, I think that was addressed with, I submitted with the application, um, the deeds that were required in 2021. Um, I believe that would refer to the easement deed through Industry Drive. I included that with all of the applications.
Okay.
And I. I'm, I'm not sure what the dispute was, but it was solved through this, and it, basically, the easement deed, um, states that. The intention of the right-of-way that was provided to this property was to, you know, uh, eventually become, um, a road that's turned over to the town. And the intention is to, you know, very, like, have utilities provided to the property, um, as well as, like, paving roads, like, like maintenance of the roads and, um, everything that comes with that, so.
Okay.
So that was ironed out.
There was no, I don't think there was a clear cut. Easement deed or anything at that point when it first came back, you know, well over there at all.
Okay.
And so that's what it was.
Okay.
Cause.
They need to clear that up, that they had the access to go there.
Okay.
And this is dated September of 2021, so it was ironed out then.
Okay, great. Um. I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you were to look just at the right side, the right half. Is the majority of that part of the development all in cleared area already?
Uh. Not the majority of it. There's probably, I'd say, because I've, I've visited this a few times, surveying it, um. I'd say about nine of the lots are in cleared area, yes.
Okay, so then when I look at Google Maps, it's, it goes a little bit north of that clearing now.
Uh, are you saying, like, north of this wetlands right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh.
Though, yeah, though clearing doesn't reach the wetland.
Okay, now. Partly just for curiosity, say we were to say no to the waiver regarding the road. Where is 600 feet on that road, and how many lots does that lose?
Um, 600 feet would be about here, and we would lose. Fourteen lots.
Fourteen lots. Um, you said that there was some other option, but it would cross wetlands. What is that?
So the alternative would really just be having a massive U, like, going down this side of the property. And it would not really be practical. It would drastically impact the wetlands. Um, because they go, they're on either side of, between the property line and the covenant area, and it would be significantly uglier and. The proposed lots, um. Yeah.
But I, I guess my question is like.
Environmental impact would be a lot higher.
And would it be to the point though where IFN W D P would say, no, you can't do that?
Um, no, it could be permanent. It would just be higher wetlands, so there'd be significantly more permitting required than the current design.
So do we have a letter of some sort from like DEP or IFN W that says if there were a road that went that way, it would be? Okay.
Uh, no, so I actually talked with, um, one of the DP, uh, agents that I'm working with on another project. And there's no, there's no real mechanism, um, that I could go through to have. Like, DP work on a project and just state that the cluster subdivision is less impactful than a conventional subdivision. There, like, there's no system to submit, like, two plans like that and have them confirm that that would happen.
Right, but in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, we are. We have to consider the conventional subdivision. What's actually doable and how many lots in a, in a doable conventional? And so I'm hesitant to waive a conventional that would require a waiver. To then go to a cluster. But if you could show me that without a waiver, you could make this subdivision work with that many lots. Then I would say, oh, okay, then, yeah, like, that just makes sense to go to a cluster subdivision, and you wouldn't be losing any. You wouldn't be losing any lots without, uh, without a waiver.
Without, without the waiver, we would not have as many lots. That's correct.
So what I'm, so what I'm saying is, you know, the waiver. We don't have to give a waiver. There's nothing that says, oh, you know, we, we can just automatically say, look at that and say, yes, a cl- a cluster subdivision. Definitely makes sense. We'll approve, uh, we'll approve this plan that actually isn't to our ordinance and have a, with a waiver. I mean, I just, right, ten for now. I, I would just be interested in your thoughts in approving, uh, conventional or really approving this many lots. Without having a conventional plan that doesn't require a waiver. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I, I do understand. I'm happy to let any of the others speak before I speak.
It has been approved for, in real situations in South Berwick, I know of. So I figured a conventional, like, hypothetical situation would be, you know, less serious and impactful.
True, but, yeah.
I don't think we're faulting you for what you submitted. I think the issue is that we just need to methodically work our way through the ordinances and. And again, you know, we do conventional, you know, we need to review it as a conventional first. So the first one's gonna be, you know, do we or do we not wanna grant that waiver? Grant that waiver, that expands it, uh, then we can have the discussion about whether we move into cluster. But again, the bigger issue that I have is. I, you know, there, there's a traffic study that we're gonna, we should be looking for, in my view. And, you know, and that, that's something that should be discussed with the town of Berwick because you're, you're creating a throughway now. You know, you're creating a throughway from Knights Pond all the way out and around through to the, the Industry Drive. And, you know. I think we should talk with Berwick first to see if, if they have any, before we go to, if we're gonna go ahead and prove it, then why are we even talking about it, right? Uh, and, and something that directly impacts them. So I think we just wanna be a good neighbor, reach out and have some comment on this from them, which I don't think is. You know. Inappropriate.
No.
And I think, let's see what they have to say, and doesn't mean we have to accept what they have to say. But at least we're getting some further information that can maybe help educate us on. The direction that we wanna go in here. You know, we get a traffic study. You know, can we say get a traffic study at the four in Berwick? We're really only responsible in Berwick. I, I don't know. I don't know the legal aspects of that. So that, that doesn't my concern. Yeah, I think, you know, just a couple of base questions that, you know, we're working our way through. My preference would be, it's just me, as you gotta say, too, you know, there's the talk of Berwick. My preference would be, it's just me, things you gotta say too, you know, there's the talk of Berwick.
I think, sorry.
I wanna say, have you spoken to Berwick, have you called them yet?
Uh, we have not, we haven't discussed this with Berwick yet, we're trying to figure out. You know, we only want to put in so much time and effort into a project where we are still unsure if it's cluster or conventional. And I think it makes more sense to make the decision on the cluster or conventional and the waiver. Before talking to Berwick, that way we can tell them, you know, the amount of lots that are going to be on the project. We can discuss with them the impact that it's gonna have on the town of Berwick with more detail. And eventually get that tra- we will, we can get that traffic study. But that's something that they'll need to have also exact inter- information on the direction of the project.
But conventional or cluster, you're asking for the same number of lots.
Correct, as long as the waiver is approved.
Right, so, I mean, I think it's safe to say that getting a traffic study with this many lots. Is going to allow us to know if, you know, a waiver is feasible. It's gonna, it's gonna be one question, question that's answered for us in terms of, is this number of lots acceptable for this spot?
The way it works in traffic, most other towns is you'll go through sketch plan. And because, you know, like, like sketch plan doesn't ensure that this project is happening, like. Sketch plan gets you through that initial point. To where you have a basic like project idea like established, like a base. And then eventually you get on to the more intense detail of the traffic study, so you can design what you already have established. And what, like, there's a lot of things that go, can go with the traffic study and are going to have to like permitting through DEP. But you kind, before doing all of those things, you have to have like, like a sketch. Somewhat approved by the town.
Right, but we're actually, I, but in, in a way, I feel like we're actually being. Kind in allowing you to prove that, uh, that that many lots is doable. And we could, we could just say tonight, no, we're not gonna pave the road, get rid of fourteen lots. And then, you know, we'll, we'll enter the conventional or a cluster with that many. So I feel like I'm eating an olive branch, saying, hey, just do this. Do this traffic study and see if, you know, we'll consider it if you can show us that that many lots is. Isn't gonna impact traffic. But we are in a place where our ordinance requires us to make the decision of sketch, sketch plan approval. If you're gonna go conventional or cluster. And I don't want, I, I also want to save me time and I don't want to say, well, we're not gonna promise you anything. You know, and then, then you're gonna go and get all this stuff done and it goes back.
That's what we're worried about.
And, and us too, we have had several subdivisions that have taken. A lot of our time and, eh, you know, we don't want that to happen again either. But we also, we do have to do our due diligence, not only for us, but for our town. For the neighbors and to, just to ensure that we're doing everything the way we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, yeah, if I could object, just a couple of things, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I, this is a, a, a very complicated project. And the problem that exists is. Without both of these proposed entrance point, the project. Would likely not be able to go forward. You have to have the access point through Industrial Drive and the one that goes through Meadow Pond. Or you already trigger a, a dead end to whatever you could do if it was off one of those things. If you go through Meadow, well, either one would require waiver to the town's ordinance, number one. So the access is critical for any discussions and if you have thirty eight lots. The planning board should. I recommend strongly that the planning board hold a joint planning board meeting with the town of Berwick. At some point, doesn't necessarily have to be right now. But their input is critical, especially as the applicant is asking. The town to accept the roadway up until where? And is, is south, is Berwick going to maintain Industrial Drive and the applicants? Uh, and then the town of South Berwick is supposed to maintain up to Industrial Drive and how do we coordinate that with the town? There needs to be early coordination, I provided the applicant the contact person for Berwick. And I would strongly suggest that whether it's Joe and Berwick and the applicant getting together. And just talking about. What's some initial, you know, what, what the project is and get them on board as soon as possible. You know, I, I would. And I understand that the applicant sort of between the rock and hard place, they don't want to move forward, but I think moving forward at this point. We have to until proved otherwise, go with thirty seven lots that are being proposed, I, the lots that are being proposed, the thirty seven. Bring that to Berwick and say, this is sort of the full build out that could happen here, the project should. Contract slightly, but regardless, we have to figure out. Ownership, maintenance, any roadway improvements. Those discussions should start place, uh, take place now because. I would recommend that until those items are worked out, the town certainly can approve the subdivision. And I think that it's gonna take some work and to get those details worked out, I mean, we don't have to have the whole design break out. But we do have to have the discussion, at least that's my opinion.
Yeah, David, I mean, those are great points, part, part of me feels like it might be in. In everyone's best interest to have a letter, whether or not, whether or not we all meet. Or Joe Quinforson from Berwick and the applicant me have a letter stating that. That road. Is an approved road on the Berwick side. And that it can hold up to thirty seven lots. Before we go any further.
I think the planning board joint meeting would be in order too.
Okay, the next thing.
I mean, I think Joe, you can assist with getting the information over, but. You know. And, and they may turn us down, so you know, have a nice day.
They get a letter from them saying, we're all settled with it.
And if that's what they wanna do, that's fine, and then, but at least now we know, neither care or they don't care. And if they don't care, that'll make me think differently about what we're doing here, right?
But at least we're not, we won't be pegging the subdivision into Meadow Pond. Um, Sandra, I, I think you've been wanting to speak.
Thank you, and, and I apologize, I can't find the raise hand. On the bottom, so I'm just raising my hand. I just want to make sure that I understand, so for the purposes of the sketch plan review. Would it be appropriate for a staff level meeting with the town of Berwick? To get some preliminary information that, yes, this is doable. You might want to have a more formal meeting than that, but just for the initial sketch plan. Application, I just want to make sure that that's, that's acceptable. The other two questions I had were also for sketch plan level. Would, are you looking for some kind of environmental evidence that putting in a traditional road? Would be more harmful environmentally, not necessarily from DEP. But some kind of information about what the environmental impact would be putting in a traditional road. Would that be enough for sketch plan and also with respect to traffic? Rather than a full blown traffic study at this point, and what about a preliminary traffic report that will give you? Traffic count, so you'll, you'll know how many, you know, what the expected traffic counts are. Which is far less expensive than doing a full traffic report. And depending on the counts, whether a full traffic report will be needed or not, I guess. But again, just again, to get us through this, the sketch plan. Level of approvals, are those the three things that you're basically looking for?
So, the. Yes, we really wanna focus on the viability of the project. And if we could get, you know, without any waivers, how many lots can you get? Get in the subdivision. And, and have it be approved by DEP and IFW, so not just what can technically fit, but what would actually get approved.
Okay. Um, so. Again, I don't think DP, DP is going to actually look at it in those terms. There are ways, though, I think, to provide some environmental evidence for the board. And so I think one of the things is, would, even if. It were fewer lots with a conventional, a conventional subdivision, if putting in the road in those lots. It, under the, under a conventional framework would be more harmful than. The cluster, even though you end up with a few more lots. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, in terms of like, in terms of just viability, like, we already know that a cluster subdivision is going to be less impactful. And is going to technically be better, but we can't approve thirty seven lots. On a plan that requires a waiver. You see what I'm saying?
What you're saying is, where's the justification?
Yeah, why, why should we, why should we say, yes, you can have thirty seven lots when you're kind of, you're asking us for a waiver? It's like, if you show us that you can actually do a subdivision with thirty seven lots, it doesn't require any waivers. Then that question goes away in my mind. But right now, you're asking for, for us to waive something in order to get that many lots.
Right, and, and excuse me, and, and I'm really just trying to clarify this so that we, we get everything that you need, but. If, so if. Suppose you could lay out a thirty lot subdivision, but putting in that road was gonna be a lot more. It can be done through permitting, but more harmful to the environment than thirty seven lots in a cluster. Would that not be a consideration for a waiver? Because you're doing something that's better environmentally.
Oh, you have, you have to be able to prove that you can create a conventional subdivision. Within the parameters of our ordinance with no waivers. And, and when you make that, that will determine how many lots you're allowed in the cluster subdivision. So right now, we have a conventional plan that requires a waiver. And that does not give us a, an appropriate baseline for how many you could have in a cluster. Kind of what I'm say, what I'm saying is, it's not necessarily that we don't think a cluster subdivision would be a better option environmentally. But we can't tell you, you can have thirty seven based on a conventional subdivision that requires waiver, get that many. But David, sorry, sorry, I just have, David has a comment.
Yeah, I was, I, I wanted to provide Sandra's, at least some direction right now, I. I would agree, at this early stage, having a preliminary traffic study. Rather than a full blown study in a scoping meeting and all that, a preliminary traffic study would give us a lot of information. And you could base that on thirty seven lots. Going from, you know, how that, that traffic's gonna be distributed kind of thing, so a preliminary traffic study, I think, would be reasonable. To get you to that point, I think that if the applicant has a preliminary meeting. With Berwick, I think that, and, and, you know, provide some information, some feedback to the town. Whether the town staff here meets with them or not. And I think some of the environmental issues that, that Sandra was mentioning, such as. If I do this, it creates this much of impervious if I do that. And it could be as easy as. Here's the, they already have two of the plans, you'd have the proposed conventional subdivision. Saying with this waiver, here's what the wetland impact is, blah, 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 they could also, I don't know if, if, if how. How quickly Liam could pull something together to show. How many lots they could get with a traditional subdivision without a waiver and what the impacts of that might be. And I think based on those, you could make the leap potentially to. If we do this cluster subdivision, here's how much wetland impact we're gonna have, here's how much environmental impact. So you could, you could compare what the actual physical numbers is, we're putting in X amount of roadway, we're doing this and. What the, but I think those initial things and, and they have had some preliminary talks with the state. IFW and the like, so it's really having some of these roadway issues worked out upfront and. And really getting some justification, as Greg said, about why the planning board shouldn't be granting this, this, this waiver.
Thank you.
Can I just maybe make an even more superficial? Or point of discussion?
Sure.
So that they don't go out and actually waste time and effort on even the preliminary traffic count. We just meet with Berwick first and see what they gotta say. And then see what they gotta say and then come back and. Give them some direction at that point in time. Why, why do we want to have them go and give us some preliminary? Have them spend money. When we may find some major issues associated with the roadway ownership, either with us or the town of Berwick. I mean.
Realistically, with the state that we're in, being so, so early, Berwick needs to be a part of this from now going forward. So I wouldn't recommend you going and doing another, another conventional plan. Without having to ask for the waiver. Before you speak with Burke. And before we have either a staff meeting like he said, or we do an actual meeting at our next time one meeting. And we have them here, you like, we have you here, just gonna put you back a couple more weeks, but.
Just to clarify, there is, there is an easement that goes down Industry Drive, like not only. From our property to that end of Industry Drive, but all through Industry Drive into Route Four.
Right, yeah, and the bottom line for us is that the impact on Berwick is going to be bigger. Possibly traffic wise than the impact on us. Depending.
And how do you separate truck traffic in the industrial park from, uh, off Industrial Drive? That traffic may also trying to avoid cutting through, is there, you know, what kind of things are proposed and. Like I said, you've got two roadways that are, that are gonna be coming to, that are gonna meet, that are under different jurisdictions, so how do the towns deal with that? So like, like you said, like, I can't stress enough that Berwick needs to get involved very early. That the person that needs to be contacted, that I was told is their new con, is their reviewer, is Candy Bellman. And I placed that, uh, her contact information in my report, it's on page five and six, and it's item number two.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, so. Just a little bit, so Lyman sounds like the goal is a cluster configuration, is that correct? Yes, okay. It's also, it sounds like. We're not permitted to base the number upon a waiver. So it sounds like we've got two, two things. Right there.
So now it's.
I mean.
Is that in the ordinance?
So we, so if you look in our ordinance at one forty, forty seven. You know, it, it states that we have to, we cannot base the number of, of lots in the cluster development. Until we know what can be done in a standard subdivision. So that's why, that's why it's real, we're in a really kind of like tough spot because. A tough spot because it requires, it requires a waiver, but then we're, we're basically giving a waiver so that we can go another direction. Which. Is, you know, it's just a really sticky situation and. The viability really, I think, comes down to the, how you enter, how you exit, traffic. And whether or not a standard subdivision is doable with that, with that many lots. Kind of sums it up, but we are, our hands are kind of tied at this point, I don't think that we can really move forward until we have the things of Berwick cleared. And I, it is totally up to you how you, how you proceed. For us, we will schedule a, a doable meeting, I think that's the best way moving forward for us. But you guys can determine how, you know, what you do on your end, but I will say that we, we need some type of. Proof that thirty seven lots without a waiver. But I will say that we, we need some type of uh proof that thirty seven lots without a waiver is viable. Um, we need to make sure and with the Berwick stuff, we'll know about entering and exiting. Um, and then it'll, it's up to you when, if and when you wanna do that traffic stuff. You know, but well, but you know, if you wanna do it now, just to get to get it done, so you can try to hurry along, you can, but if you'd rather wait till we know the other things. You can do that too. Um, but I think that's a planning board. Is it? Do you guys agree? So would you um send a letter requesting the Berwick Planning Board to?
Between Liam and I, we'll, we'll talk to them and.
Perfect, so we'll get that in the books.
Sure.
For the next meeting.
Sandra is, was trying to say something, I think, before you moved on from this item.
Yeah, and and I just have, and again, this is, I'm not, this isn't an argument in any way, I'm just trying to clarify again. So the um ordinance says that the number of units in the cluster subdivision. Um, whether proposed to single-family and multifamily development shall in no case succeed the number of units or lots that could. Says realistically be created in the standard subdivision, so I guess I'm not completely understanding. Um, so you could, you know, wi- with a waiver, you could realistically create X number of units in a subdivision. Um. So I guess I'm just not really completely understanding the hesitancy in the waiver issue. And again, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, absolutely, we are not, we are not, um, uh, you know. There, there's nothing that says we have to grant a waiver. The or- the ordinance is the rule of law and waiver is something that we discuss. And base it on pros and cons and um, you know. How, whether uh maximizing the applicant's, you know, return on investment for their subdivision is not. A reason for a waiver, and that is in our ordinance as well. Um, and so reasonable to me is working within the boundaries of our ordinance. Without asking for, for exceptions. That to me is reasonable, and that would would be something that we could talk about. Um, as a, as a board on how we feel about that waiver, um, I think that's a discussion among us. Um, that we could, we can certainly have. Um, but at this point, I think that there might be a couple other things that need to be verified. For us as well, that it may be in your best interest to, to. Hold off on figuring that out until we have the answers to the other two things.
Okay.
But um, yeah, waiver, waivers, we're, we are under no requirement to, to give them just for the sake of. Of it being beneficial financially for the applicant. If that makes sense.
No, I, I get that, so I, so we'll, I guess we can, as we get, gather this other information for you, maybe we could address that with the board at a later time.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so now we're saying that the need for a waiver is not a hard stop now.
It is.
We're saying it is open to discussion.
It is open for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, but.
The first question we're gonna have to ask. As we started this, it was wondering that we want to grant, that's the first question. The waiver, now we're getting into a much larger subdivisions, and that's traditional versus cluster. And again, I I want, I need to be more educated before I even say yes or no. I'm not gonna say yes to a waiver tonight, because there's questions that need to be answered. And so that's where I want to, you know, I think, at least a initial conversation with Berwick to help. Get the other side of the story and get some information on the roadway ownership and how that's gonna work and. You know, the order.
Sorry.
I just wanted to touch on something that Hershey brought up previously, considering. And there's a. I want to give this question, but is there anything in the question writing that says the area that they are preserving?
Yes.
I didn't hear that question.
Uh, he was just, he was asking about the open space. Like, so if we were, if we go to a cluster subdivision, what happens to that other space that we saved? And making sure that it's not used for development later on, which I believe we do. Um, and you can find it in the ordinance, but we can definitely, we can look at that when it gets.
It's, it will be de-restricted forever not to be utilized for anything else. It's written up that way, so you can't do that, that's the reason why we did it.
I do have one more question for him.
Sure.
In general and stuff. In this cluster thing, and again, in relation that things probably with the groundwater and the possible town well. Lots and things like that, are there requirements, should there be requirements or anything on the type of fuel that is used in? In houses for heating, say, uh. Restrictions on tanks or tank size or anything that for oil or something like that, is that, is that something that?
Not normally. Unless there's anything written in the ordinance.
Anybody know?
It's, there's, yeah, the water district does, you know. They, they do a study like that, obviously. And obviously, they wanna protect their wells if they're gonna put a well in. Um, I know that they've um done it before with contamination. They've had fund money that come in and put in double-lined tanks and all of that in some places, so. That'd be a wa- water district question. It's the wellhead protection, so that's, you know, there'd be something that.
Yeah. You know, again, are there any heavy metal fuels or over in industry room? That might, you might wanna be aware of.
So Amy will be in touch regarding scheduling the planning board meeting and. I think that's good for me. I wish that. Um, the last thing on our agenda tonight is.
Okay, I actually, today is my last day. He's gone too. Not sure yet.
Thank you.
And. Uh, the only thing on our agenda tonight is the planning board charge for. David, I think you sent it to us?
Yes.
Send us the uh. I don't know if I can find it, I have so many. It's all over our ordinance, I don't know if you can bring it up.
Yeah, I sure can, can I share my screen with you? Wait, hold on, I just brought up the wrong one, hold on. Let me close out some of the stuff I'm working on here, hold on. I had all the San Diego State's plans and stuff up, so my computer's going kind of slowly, so hold on a second.
You have it, you have it, yeah, yeah.
Part of the, uh, I just, I just realized what the part of the issue is, so hopefully you should be able to see by. Uh, my screen right now. And I realized at the very top, I changed everything that you asked me to, except for, hold up. The date at the top. So I, I, that, so that's my, that's my issue here, so. Uh, in any event, this, this is not April twelfth, this is a document that I sent you earlier today. So, uh, and what, what I did is I made some, some changes. Uh, that the board asked me to, there were some debates back and forth, so I, I included all that language. Um, and then the, some of the primary uh, primary changes, we talked about. You know, about the whole issue, whether can, if we need a conventional solar farm, I, I, excuse me. Commercial solar farms, I'm still on cluster subdivision. Um, whether we had the word conventional as that, we decided that we would not, because anything that would be this large, it would. Require regulating, it doesn't matter who's proposing it, so I took that kind of language out and primarily. Um, the stuff that I added since our last time, really, is I, I put a, I put a. Uh, a note in here for the town council that sort of explains, this is ha- gonna have to be legal review. And so that's sort of in there. And some of the uh ordinance recommendations, in addition to the actual ordinance, was. Amending the town's uh, uh, the town's definitions to include a solar farm definition. This was the one that we worked through. If the council wants to change that, they can. The other issue that we discussed that is I provided in this document, existing land use table A. If we are going to create a, uh, this is the page that um public utilities. Uh, if you can see my cursor, can you see that moving here? Public utilities is listed here, and here's all the zoning districts that is, it is allowed in as a major site plan. So everything except for the R five zoning district. So one of the recommendations would be to include um solar farms uh on this page. As a separate freestanding use. And where the town council decides to regulate it and what uses they wanted. I explained in, uh, hold on, I explained in this uh section here. That I've just highlighted that uh. The board recommended including that use in the uh, in the land use table. But we didn't specify where, or the board hasn't specified what zones that should be. Uh, limited to, if that makes sense.
I think we were gonna have discussions on really kind of like two items that was coming down to where in town we may or may not wanna see them. I didn't think we were punting to the town council on that, that's, that's kind of what this said. Dave, are you suggesting that we punt that to the town council?
I, uh, no, I am not suggesting that. I, I believe that the board suggested that. That some of this work needs to be ironed out at, at the, at the last level with the board. I, it's, it's the planning boards, whatever you wanna send to the town council, that's what we can send to the town council. If the board wants to work on this, uh, on this and actually insert that and discuss the pros and cons of every single zone, I'm assuming. For example, B one, B two, and industrial, B one and B two, at least, you probably wouldn't wanna have it, have them in. R five, probably not, but that's really up to the board, if you guys wanna work on this specific um land use table. We can certainly do that, that's, that's your call.
Okay. Way, not a big deal, I, I thought we were gonna be talking about where to put them, and kind of like, do we want to set a neighbor's restriction? Based on our last conversation, Dave went and made some of those changes, which are fine. Um, maybe I misunderstood, I misunderstood, I mean, I'm happy to talk about where it shouldn't, shouldn't go, but.
I think we all generally agree that it was the five megawatt that we wanted to cap. That, which was like twenty acres or two.
It's my recollection, I'm like, just five megawatts. Conversation about. Do we even want that, what if we set a fifty acre restriction? Or it could only happen in these particular zones. Maybe I wasn't here for one of those conversations, you gotta know.
Yeah, I think that, I thought that we had kind of come to a point where we got five megawatt was probably the max. That we would want. Which was about twenty acres, and the real questions were coming down to setbacks. And.
Right.
What abouters to notify? And, yeah, like, there was a question about, um. You know, are you putting this in a field or are you like clear-cutting to do it? But I think we came to the conclusion that you can do it everyone on your properties, and even if they didn't do solar, they can still clear cut. And there's nothing you can do about it. So, um.
That was one thing that we, that, the last meeting that we had, the board, uh, on, on page. Uh, number one of six, I can share this again if you'd like. Yeah, do that. Okay, so hopefully you can see this page, whoops, nope, I might, we just seen you. Okay, so what we did in the last meeting was the setbacks, we had been banding about one hundred feet. For a setback, and now, uh, the last time I was directed to put five hundred feet. Uh, as a, as a required setback around the sites.
You know, five hundred, no cut zone around it.
Right.
And reduce your acreage. It's gonna be under a five, five megawatt system.
Right.
Five megawatts range, but it, that, we want to, the panel space is ten, you know, the ten acres.
Yeah, there, there will probably be a number of, of limiting factors to any of these, for example. What the state will allow as far as, you know, up to five megawatts, for example, I know there's some, the state. Is looking at some of those numbers and, and the like, but regardless, it's really just the acreage. If you have a large enough parcel and you can provide five hundred, I, uh, five hundred foot setback around whatever you're proposing. If they can make it fit, then. Then, you know, they can, they can make it, you know, I mean, it, it's gonna require a substantial parcel. I mean, but most of the, the things that we've looked at were about twenty acres. If you increase the setback, it may in many cases, in most cases, frankly. It would just be the land lease area that the utility or whatever you wanna call it, a solar farm would have to lease or purchase from the property on. That's, that's, you know, really is what's gonna be the primary thing, it's gonna be lot size, if you can fit it in and you're close to the. Uh, distribution uh lines and things like that. So there's a number of things that are gonna limit where these things can go as it is.
Yeah, I think our primary concern was the, the view of the property. Just that, yeah. Then there was a question about the farm. Like, what's that?
Yeah. Um, and I, I did also include some language, which is, hold on. That we had talked about, um, was the end-of-life restoration plan. And so we talked about time. And so we talked about time set and putting out at least a minimum standard. And so right now, the, what I did on this, and I'll just fold it so you can see. Is I added this language here. I'm talking about a restoration, and so I added it down at this point, the narrative should also include the proposed restoration plan. Planting species, plant sizes, and install, et cetera. At minimum, the plan shall include plantings with appropriate native. Uh, plant species to return the cleared areas of the solar farm to their original state. So I tried to write that in there, that if you had a wide open field and one of these went in there and somehow they could provide a buffer. Then they would have to return it, say, if someone wanted to say, okay, we, we're done leasing this after twenty years, we're gonna turn it back into a farm field. I think that would be a reasonable. Plan for the, for the planning board to accept. If it's a forest and you want to require. Sort of, uh, native species, you know, saplings or what have you, to be planted at random intervals, or, or if it's a watery area, some kind of plant species to help. That fill in the hole that was created by the solar farm. I think that would allow you to regulate based on that, that language.
Where, David, do we have in here the part about? The cutting of the trees. For shade, to limit shade.
Oh, they, okay, I, I, there's a couple of areas. On page one. Under one, which is right here. We talked about land disturbance, uh, but basically they are not allowed to clear any land. You know, as soon as the town gets an application, they're not, they can't clear any land and without the approval of the code enforcement officer. So we have that covered here. We also, uh, let's see. I also talked about. Uh, the, well, here's the setbacks and the shade management areas, so. Wherever they propose, they have to show us where they're proposing it, and it cannot be within the required setback area. So that was another thing that we, we built into here. And, uh, same with. And then here's what we did to include some other buffering standards. So there, there's a few different places in the organs where we included it. Um, uh, some kind of buffering standards. And visual litigation.
Um, I just want to hop back to number three quick. Ken, you had a comment.
Yeah, we had spoken on council, did we kind of? Almost immediately, we just.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna say they aren't allowed to do that. They're not allowed to cut. Cut trees down, well, not completely, um. I said, yeah, like a half tree.
Well, don't we kind of say that here, though? You know, if we're getting the five hundred foot setback from property lines. Right, the application shall include all areas where shade management's proposed. In detail, proposed in the shade area, cuts low in relation to the required buffer spends in solar panels. And related to the shade management areas are prohibited within the required setback area, so they can't be approaching on that setback.
You know, but what if it's like in the middle of the project?
Oh, yeah, I choose saying.
They're like, all of a sudden, they're like.
Yeah. Yeah, so I know, we just tried to say, no, we didn't want that.
Yeah.
So they were saying no cuts low.
But it, no cuts, if, if they wanted to leave trees and provide a. Additional cut area, as long as it's not within the setback area, I, I don't see why anyone would propose it, but this is just a way to eliminate it, like, as we talked at other meetings. Sometimes what to get. The angles for the most of, uh, duration during the day, some of these cut zones are fairly extreme. So we increased the, the depth of the required setback and we're prohibiting cut zone or shade management cutting in that. In that area, so I don't think anyone's gonna propose it, but it had to be spelled out in the ordinance. To say you cannot do it.
And we're saying we don't, we would prefer if, it's like in the middle of twenty acres. That they don't like. Cut a bunch of trees in half.
Right.
You know what, I'm gonna defer to Pat. What? Do you have any opinions on that?
Uh, um. I mean, if a tree gets cut in half, if they're trying to prevent shade, if they need sun on these panels. A tree cut in half is a good wildlife tree.
We'll leave it there.
But, but then again, it can be pretty ugly. So if, you know, if then, if there's a five hundred foot buffer, but some of these trees closer to the solar panels are cut in half. But they're not viewed that much except from the area of the panels. I don't see that as a big deal, because they are good wildlife trees. We're kind of like them and, you know, porcupines like them.
Great, okay then.
On the inside of the five hundred foot buffer.
Let's do that. I want to be clear, though, setback is not a buffer. It's a setback, and then there's buffer requirements, so two separate things.
Okay, that, that I would want. So a setback from, what's the setback? Okay, so this, so if this, so if you're in a forest. You can cut. You have to, from the property line, five hundred feet in. And then they can cut. But, so there could be some, and then like say there's another two hundred feet and then the solar panels, so they can cut the trees in half. Next.
Five hundred feet undisturbed.
Yeah.
And then two hundred feet of.
Are you allowing them to cut them down to the ground?
Yes, they can if they want to.
Yeah, but they can leave them half, or some half.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see that as a problem if it's, if they're just cutting enough off to prevent shade. These are solar panels, they need the sun.
I know, right? Okay.
And we, and that might encourage a wildlife. Because that's an issue.
Great, so, so I don't have a pencil then. Okay, great. So then really, um, do we have in here the limitations of the twenty acres and five megawatt?
No. No, as far as the megawatts, we didn't. We didn't list it specifically. I, if you want to put a, uh, I could easily put in a five megawatt limit on that. And, uh. Okay, and. And with that, uh, what was the other one that you mentioned, Betsy? I'm sorry, five what mega, uh, megawatt limit and a, and a maximum. Clear area of twenty acres? The problem is, if you, you could have a, they could do. It depends on how. I don't know if you want to limit the size and say you could only do twenty acres, because. If they wanted to be really environmentally sensitive and you had like in, uh, different pockets of environmental thing, and they had three hundred acres. If the combined total of the solar farm. Was twenty acres, but to do that with all the buffers, they had to use under nature. I, I don't think that matters, so. I mean, if you want to put a, a limit in there, but I just, I left it.
I don't think that it's a, I guess I, I. I should have said not a maximum of twenty acres, but a minimum. So, for example, you would have to have at least twenty acres to do the five mega. Instead of saying you can, can't have more than twenty acres. It's like you have to have a minimum. Yeah, so, so.
Practically speaking, you're not gonna do it unless you have.
Right, but we don't want people to like squish it. So, does that make sense, David?
Yeah.
It's like a minimum, not a maximum. But that's only if everyone.
Yeah, minimum, minimum twenty, uh, twenty acres and a five, uh, five megawatt maximum size. Correct?
I said.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Does everybody agree on the five megawatt max? Yes.
Motion to set the minimum requirement for a five megawatt. System.
And then in the maximum. Five megawatt. So the maximum megawatt would be five megawatts. Okay, I thought you just said five megawatts. I'll second it. Sorry. Listen, it's nine, ten, it's nine, ten.
Oh, so you. I, you, do you want me to amend? The ordinance and send that to Amy then? Just include those two items, send that to Amy for final.
Yes.
Correct?
We haven't had a vote yet, David, so.
No, I, I just want to, I couldn't hear something for a second there, so.
Okay, remember discussion. The motion on the table is that we agree to a five megawatt maximum on a minimum of twenty acres. Yeah, I'll take the vote, Bernard Bailey. Ken Conley, Greg Sinser.
Yes.
Bill Cole.
Hi.
Randy O'Callaghan. So, David. You can add that in.
Maybe, maybe go a step further, so we don't go back. We visited everything.
Yep.
Are there any changes to what's here?
No, I think, and I, they want this tomorrow morning.
Who says?
Well, they didn't give us any heads up on that, so.
They've been asking, but it's.
Nobody has asked me.
No, they haven't.
And I am the chair of the planning board, listen. Nobody's asked me.
So what they're asking is what we have. Which is pretty good. They want. They just want to see it. So.
Them, so basically, we took the motion out of that past, so really, in large part, we don't really, almost don't care where. It's gonna be. Right, so we're sitting on this. With, well, we're living this as it is right now. That, that's.
And they're going to send it back to us.
But you.
Is there something going on? We're not aware of?
No, no, what I'm saying is they're gonna look at it and they're probably gonna say, they're gonna disagree with something.
But just for, and you can tell whoever it is that is talking that. You know, when it, you know, this is business and if they have a requirement for a time limit, they need to contact us.
Us to push through and finish this.
Totally get it. Nobody's contacted me.
No.
To, uh, let me know that, so. So, any other comments before we adjourn? I do have one.
So. What are we doing with this? We just said put in that maximum five megawatts in. Are we touching the land use table or no? I think frankly, our language is limited anyway. And where it's logically gonna go, you're not gonna see it to be one, B two. Give it to the council.
So any other number comments? I just want to say, I don't know if I want to say, but today is Joe's birthday. So happy birthday, Joe. I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Good night, everybody.